The older kids flew in. You and what I call the nutrients on.
There you go.
That's yourself.
That's funny.
Yeah.
Hey Scott.
All right.
He's gonna brush it.
So is that working?
Yes. Make sure my.
All of these rights.
Yeah.
Daryl, do you know? Oh, there we go.
See that?
Oh.
Daryl one lane.
Smooth.
Is this, is this correct? Are we, are we ready to go?
Yes, I got to go.
Let's go ahead and get started on our work session. I had asked Shannon to come and give us an update on the, you know, meetings that we had a little bit back on zoning update. And just give her, have her give us an update on where they are on that. Um, so Shannon, if you want to do that, I'm going to take that out of order so that you don't have to wait through all the other stuff.
Great, thank you.
Um, good evening. Um, I'm just here to give you an update from the last time we all met. We met with the commissioner at your zoning retreat um, back in March. And if you can remember, we took a moment and presented on planning theory and kind of the history of um, the city and its planning concepts. And then we had an open discussion about any policy issues that you all were seeing. And so what we heard um, from that day and what we hope to be working on um, moving forward are pertaining to eight major topic areas. Um, so the first one is timing of open space preservation during the development process. Uh, the second one pertains to streamlining standard zoning conditions. Uh, the third is a higher review standards to improve development feasibility. Fourth was buffer requirements. The fifth is subdivision of lots and minimum lot size in the RL district. Topic six would be viability and impact of residential hamlets. Topic seven would be mixed use hamlet expansion and criteria related to clustering. And then topic eight would be reviewing modifying the allowed uses within the RL district. Um, so again, just to be clear, those were kind of eight topical areas that we um, heard from you all during the retreat that needed to be addressed within the zoning. And so we hope to come back to you with um, actual language that needs um, uh, needs legal review as well before we move forward past just the topical areas. Anything that I missed or that you think needs to also be considered at this time?
Do you think there should be a discussion um, amongst us as far as that language that you put in there?
Absolutely. So that's what we'll be coming back to you next is the actual language itself.
Okay, but I mean, you're telling me you're going to bring me the language for me to look at and approve. I'm wondering should you get some of our ideas to create the language that we want to pass first?
We can. We also got a lot from you during the actual retreat, you know, some areas that you wanted us to address, but do you have anything in particular?
Okay.
I mean, that's the thing. If you've got other stuff that you thought of.
No, well, I mean, you're right. There was a lot. There was a lot of notes taken, so we'll, we'll, we'll see if those, those apply with which you present us. I'll give you that.
Okay.
Thank you.
In the meantime, though, if there are other things that you thought about, it's the opportune time. The goal is to hopefully have something to look at for our next work session. Uh, but some of it is, you know, we've gotten into smears with the legal review that needs to be done and all of that. So we just wanted to make sure that what came back was not only responsive to what people had said, but also, you know, has passed legal review and we know that we could actually do the thing. Um, some of the things we talked about are actually in this agenda, like some of the uh, uh, application fee things that we had talked about and all of that, because that's something that we can do on our own. But you know, we hired experts to help us with the other piece. So. But absolutely, I mean, you've got Shannon's contact information. If you don't have it, I can give it to you again, you know, if there's, if there's stuff that you want to make sure that they captured.
Can you give me that list? I, I didn't have the time to write them.
Absolutely, absolutely. First one is timing of open space preservation during the development process.
Make a copy of that.
Do you want me to just do that?
Yeah.
Do you want me to say them again then?
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll send it there.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, no, you're welcome. Good?
Good. Thanks very much. Does anybody have any questions? No, thanks, Shannon.
Okay, sure.
Just wanted to make sure everybody knew that that's like work in progress and it's being done. And, and I think, I mean, you know, go ahead and say it, but Caleb, who is one of the people that has done a lot of the actual code writing for us, has been finishing up the Atlanta zoning. They just got done this week, and so he's able to dive in next week, which is why we're thinking next month we should have some, some content. They've been working on theoretical answers to get the content together. All right, next up is agenda review. We will have all the normal things on agenda review. Uh, Dana? Did I, did I miss? Okay. Um, first up is the review of the minutes. If anybody knows that they've got something, let me know. Otherwise, that's just what it is. We'll have staff reports and.
Yeah, I was, I was available. This Zoom was not taking place. So that was.
Yeah, the Zoom failed, right?
Zoom failed.
Yeah.
There were words that they did. We got back up there.
Hmm.
I appreciate somebody letting me know that.
Would we note that in the minutes though?
Yeah.
Um, next thing is a couple of public hearings. Mike, you want to talk to the first one?
Sure, uh, Mayor and Council. The first one is um, uh, a stream buffer variance that came before um, City Council for a first read a month ago. Um, it's for a project in Saranby called Aging in, the Aging in Place Center. It's a little over seven acres. On the western boundary of that uh, is a stream with of course the city's uh, stream buffers fifty feet from the bank and then uh, uh, impervious setbacks and additional twenty-five feet for a total of seventy-five feet. Um, because of the addition of the fire service road um, that came later in their process after consulting with our um, fire department, um, the plan now shows a couple of encroachments into the uh, impervious setback and into the buffer. These are primarily um, almost entirely, although not entirely, um, grading issues. So they'll be replanted once construction is done. Um, the stream buffer variances, the uh, impervious setback uh, encroachment is actually for the uh, the concrete apron for the entrance to that fire service road. And so that would be an impervious surface that would be put in the impervious surface setback. Uh, the applicant has um, uh, the total proposed uh, uh, encroachment of the stream buffer is three thousand four hundred and eighty-eight feet. Um, they have also proposed an additional uh, as mitigation, additional stream buffer located elsewhere but nearby of seventeen thousand four hundred and twenty-four square feet. So a lot of additional um, stream buffer area uh, to be added, much more than is going to be um, encroached upon. And again, that encroachment is uh, to be replanted. And then the impervious setback is a total of uh, of eight hundred and thirty-six square feet. And they proposed an additional six thousand two hundred square feet of impervious setback also in their plan. So again, replacing um, many more square feet than they're proposing to encroach. Uh, Planning Commission had a public hearing at their uh, last meeting and devoted three zero to recommend approval.
I just wanted to say too, I, I appreciate, we've met a couple of times with the engineers as they've been working through this, the light imprint stormwater that is our stormwater code is something that I've personally spent a lot of time on. And we made a couple of suggestions to them that they've adopted into what they're doing to slow the flow. Or infiltration on the site. Is that? Is that something? Just the battery done? How are we doing? Is that okay? All right, perfect. Anyway, just was pleased with the changes they made that, that made it better. And so they've been very responsive.
I, I should have mentioned, there are three recommending conditions that you'll notice on the fifth page in, at the end of the uh, memo. I don't know if you're interested in going through them or not, but uh, uh, they are basically just ensuring that what they've proposed as mitigation actually happens. So it'll hide receding quickly after the, the disturbance to make sure that the, the ground is stabilized as quickly as possible. And, and, and just tying them to their plan and the other two.
Do we have any questions about this one? No, all right. Next up is uh, the first read of the budget ordinance. Uh, Robbie?
Right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's the time of the year where we do the first reading of the, the budget ordinance. So FY twenty-five budget starts on July first, which is less than a month from now. Uh, you have in your packet uh, an agenda uh, report that goes over the budget in kind of a summary form, but then also you have the documents with the statement of revenues that basically break down all the funds and you have the revenues and the expenditures. And you also have in there things like other funds, like a T-Spot fund and a hotel motel fund, which makes up the entire budget uh, total is about eleven, eleven point one million dollars uh, with the general fund being five million of that. The bulk of it comes through, you know, hotel motel, T-Spots and such, but and also uh, reserves. Uh, so this is the first read. The second read, we haven't confirmed today yet, but I sent out a group text today and I got a lot of response that we're looking at closest to the end of the month, as close to the end of June as possible. Because what we don't know is what our fund balance is going to be, because we do have two payroll periods left. We have some other big ticket items that we, we have to pay for. We bought a ladder truck. We haven't paid for that yet. It hasn't shown up. We paid for it, but it hasn't shown up in the financials yet. Uh, the Public Works Building, we'll be finishing that off. That'll show up in the financials. And so there's other ticket items that we're looking at that we're going to be uh, come out of the fund balance. That's why I'm not going to give you what that fund balance is going to be, because it's going to change. And I want to tell you something that's going to be totally different, not much, but a little bit different by the end of the month. So June twenty-seventh around four, at four PM is what we're looking at, a target date uh, for the second public hearing. I'm talking about that more than I am talking about the budget, because you know, in case you have any questions, but I'm trying to proceed forward with that date, because we have to advertise for it. Uh, we have to give at least two weeks.
We want to be as close as we can be to the end of the month, because that's when the numbers are going to be.
Yeah, numbers are more accurate. We'll get through those two payrolls. We pay for what we're going to pay for. We know that, okay, we're not going to, so many things are going to have to go into uh, we'll pay in the next year, but they'll still fall when we do our audit. They still fall under this year's budget. So we'll know more about those numbers. But I need for that second public hearing on the twenty-seventh, I need a quorum present with uh, Tom Lacy over here to my side looking up at me. We need a quorum presence. I need at least three of you here. So it means three of you can be on Zoom, the mayor being one, and then uh, and two of you can be on Zoom if you want, but I need three people here. So looking at that confirmation and we'll be good to go. But as far as this year's budget uh, is going, it's looking real good. If you look at the amended budget that we did, our budget that we're projecting for this coming fiscal year is very, very similar to our amended budget, which is good, because that means we amended a budget to reflect where we were at the, at the time in January, and we're on track for that going forward. Um, we, we got everything in the budget that we talked about during those budget meetings. We haven't added or subtracted anymore, like I said, unless I circle back to you guys. But I'd be happy to go into specifics or, or details on any specific item. But again, this is a public hearing and it's the first read required by law for the FY twenty, twenty-five budget.
Do you have any questions? I don't know if you guys look, sorry.
No, I was just gonna, well, about, I said on the, I think I responded around four. Did that work for everybody to back it up a little bit from two to four? Because I can be here.
And I'll be traveling, so I can be on.
You, you can zoom in from uh, I sixteen.
Yeah.
I'm on vacation.
Okay, so there's two of us.
Got two?
For sure.
Yeah, okay. I listen now.
Yeah.
So I got two confirmed and two maybe. I'll, I'll come pick you up. I'll send an Uber.
You said. You said four o'clock?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Cool.
Okay.
I was just going to point out one thing that I noticed in the, in the report that he put in the, in the package here. Uh, you know, our, our grants are down quite a bit this year because all the COVID money has stopped coming in, right? There were several, two years worth of grants that had come in for that. And our fund balance is still, general fund is still higher. And that is in great part uh, because of house sales in Saranby right now and a couple of the other developments around. So that's new people coming in and, and even see where they live. So it's the process at work and that's good stuff. Um, next one up is twenty-three dash oh five nine, which is uh, rezoning from RL the HMU.
Sweet. Um, Mayor and Council, this is an item that was deferred um, uh, by the City Council on January ninth. It's proposal to rezone uh, almost two hundred and three acres on Sardis Road as a part of the Saranby Hamlet. It connects um, uh, to Cahueta County on the south side and is roughly square in shape, got some streams running across it. On the northeast corner, it, it, it connects to the existing Saranby Hamlet. Um, there is no concept plan included in this, so uh, for now, without a concept plan, there would be no development allowed on the property. Um, the applicant, um, I believe will be uh, coming in with a concept plan at some point in the near future. Uh, but uh, at this point, there's no, uh, no concept plan, so the two hundred and um, two uh, plus development rights that are available would be, would be available to apply elsewhere in the hamlet for, for the time being. And this was uh, this was, had a, a public hearing before the planning commission back in December, when there were five members. They voted five to nothing to uh, recommend approval with the, with some conditions. I would like to point out a couple of things in the conditions. Um, condition number two um, was altered slightly, knowing that it came in without a um, a concept plan. A sentence was added if you all uh, approved the change or approved the conditions as, as presented, that unpaved roads and paths may be allowed to cross the site connecting to Saranby Farmets to Sardis Road. Just that would, again, just allow the existing road network in Saranby to connect in an unpaved way across to the west to um, to Sardis Road, even in the absence of that concept plan. Um, if they chose to, um, chose to do it. And then finally, condition number ten, um, which is the last one on the, the last page, um, mentions a discrepancy and landlot references. That was a condition um, added by the, a, a condition of the planning commission's recommendation for approval. And it just had to do with um, landlot numbers in the application materials. There were um, a couple of landlot numbers listed in, on some of the paperwork, only one on another. It was just to clean that up. And that was cleaned up before it came to you even for that last meeting. So if you adopt these conditions, to prove it with these conditions, that condition number ten is not necessary. You can strike it or um, no harm if it stays.
And we're expecting that, that what eventually is going to come in the plan is some farmet kind of things in this lot and that most of these development rights are going down into Cahueta parcel.
The, that's right. The version that I've seen, I don't remember the, the number of uh, development rates that they wanted to use on the property, but that's right, something um, uh, lower density farmet-ish. Um, and, and yes, most of the development rights will end up being applied elsewhere in the district.
Anybody have any questions about this?
Now, how much open space does that add?
Uh, about. So it will, so the requirement is seventy percent. So two hundred acres would be a hundred and forty acres of additional open space. At a, at a.
Yeah, you're, yes, you're welcome to give some context.
Um, so the plan that we'll be bringing forward fairly soon will have somewhere between thirty-two and thirty-five, like platted acres. So while we would only have to have a hundred and forty, right, uh, quick math, we'll actually be bringing forward about a hundred and seventy-ish, right, so thirty acres over. Um, and again, this is the city's wonderful zoning at play and that those additional thirty acres um, were able to provide as green space on this site, because we'll be moving all hundred and seventy development rights inside of the thirty percent that were, that we are already planning to disturb, right? So further densifying the thirty percent within one of the five neighborhoods of Saranby versus landing a two hundred unit hamlet on this two hundred acres, which the zoning also allows.
Thanks, Scotty. Any questions? All right. New business items, uh, we have several of them. Uh, we have a variance for an accessory structure uh, in the RL.
That's right. This is a, a, a first read of a, a new item, the applicants. Here, yes, we have one of the applicants here. Um, if you all have questions. So this is a, um, in the Estates of Cedar Grove, um, with Jeff Lindsay Communities uh, has uh, in which Jeff Lindsay Communities has, has started building homes. This is the very last house on the main road um, before it, it dead ends into what will be phase two, um, which is a hamlet. This particular property and all of phase one is rural district. Um, uh, that main road runs across the front of the house and then curves and also runs along the side of the lot. Um, the way uh, we regulate frontages and where you can build accessory dwelling, um, it means that they can't build, basically, they can't build between the house and either, either the side or the front, right? They're both defined as first layer in the zoning, which is where you can't build an accessory structure. Their original site plan showed a detached garage in that location. Um, it was not called out by the plan reviewer for the city at the time when the house was approved. Now, it wasn't the current owner who built the house. It was Jeff Lindsay Communities. Uh, but that site plan did show future garage. Um, uh, and, and they were not alerted that that wasn't going to be allowed, which we would intend to do. Um, if we see things on a plan that aren't going to be allowed, let the applicant know. Um, again, that was a different uh, a different entity. But uh, so their proposal is to build this garage beside the house where there's already a pad port right at the end of their driveway. And um, but it would be between the house and the, the road, the main road that runs along the side of the property also. Um, I will also mention that it is, right, the plan for phase two um, shows that same road continuing farther back and it loops all the way around and dead ends back into itself. Right, basically right there. So the dead end will be facing the location of that, of that garage. Uh, so um, this is the first read. If you have questions for the applicant, um, please do. Oh, the applicant has also pointed out that um, uh, probably due to the same um, plan review process, there is another uh, lot there in uh, Cedar Grove Estates where this same condition was not caught and there is a garage sitting on a corner lot, just like is proposed here.
And, and they've done a good job of taking photographs of all of that and showing that it's not offensive the way that that sits. I mean, again, it's one of the, the interesting things about our code, the way that a lot can be wrapped by roads. Uh, but it, it's, it's not a condition that feels to me like a negative thing. I don't know if anybody else has had time to go out there and take a peek, but. If you, if you haven't, you know, take a, take a ride out there and see where this is and, and just try to picture that. I mean, it's basically the garage for the house right there. If it were connected, it wouldn't even be a discussion, right? And, and so it, it just feels like a a no breaker.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I think in front of that car.
Yeah, it's, it's in front of where that car is and, or beyond where that car is. Applicants here, if anybody has any questions or or for Mike or and again, this is a, a first read tonight, so we're not acting on it tonight, but.
That's right. Public hearing before the planning commission in nine days, a week on Thursday.
Right.
And then again, in here in a month.
Anybody? Nope. Moving along. All right, moving along. Uh, next up is the ordinance to actually make the physical change now that we've gotten the signed bill from the governor on the hotel motel tax. Probably.
Sure, that's exactly the agenda. Um, we have to, there's a, a step missed last year. We created the, the CBB and, and we created the ability to collect eight percent. We have the ability now, because we got a CBB and a DM, DMO, the designated uh, destination marketing organization, so we can collect up eight, eight percent. So that was taken care of. Representative Mendesha Thomas, uh, sponsored bill and some others uh, joined in and it passed legislature, as the mayor said, that Governor Kemp has signed it into law. So now we can go up to eight percent, not until September first. There is a period of time we have to wait. Uh, it's like three months essentially uh, upon the passage of the, or the signing of the bill and such, so September first. And so I got a letter from DCA Department of Community Affairs waiting for this document right here to be passed by the mayor and council. So tomorrow I can send it to them, say we're good to go. And then we can initiate the process, because they also have to keep their records to know that we are not collecting eight percent. And of course, that is divvied up. I can, I can share those numbers with you if you want. They're in the ordinance, how that's divvied up between the, the, the Convention and Administration Bureau, the chair of the CVBs right here, as well as the DMO, which is basically one point five cents of that, that money. And then you got the city of Chattahoochee Hills as well. So that, that eight percent is divvied up across those entities. But yeah, this is the legislation that was required and our attorneys drafted this for us and worked with us and they probably know a lot more than, about hotel motel tax law than they ever wanted to know. It's, it's very, it's very confusing law, especially when you change percentages and you start getting up. That's the highest you can collect is eight percent.
Anybody?
No, sounds good.
I mean, that's just what it is. It's the, the last step in adopting this thing that we've been working on for a while. Um, uh, next up is the RICO historic marker content. I love historic markers, so yeah. Uh, Brian or Lila, who, who's gonna?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Uh, Brian Gross, Lila Ryan from the Historic Commission. Um, we sent the uh, content for the RICO school marker in your packets and um, we'd like to answer any questions you may have requesting your approval of the content for this side.
I have a question just about process. Because I feel like, and I, I, I'm going to look at you, because I'm going to ask a question here as a fan of the Oxford comma, just commas in general. In nineteen thirty-two comma?
I think that one can go either way.
Okay, so I'll ignore that one. And then the capitalization of the the, the Fulton County School Board. Not sure that that T should be capitalized. The text itself is amazing. I just want it grammatically perfect.
One two.
It's, it's in the first sense again.
That's lowercase.
That would be lowercase, okay, so. So it's, it's not saying that's an English history, or, or English literature professor on board. I, I feel like I can absolutely rely on yours.
There's no punctuation.
That may be overselling it, but like I.
Unless, well, do they, do they, it would go to their use of it. So does Fulton County Board of Education? If they capitalize it, we are obligated to follow their practice, obviously.
I wouldn't think that's.
Yeah, so that would be the, that would be the only instance.
So that would be my only comment, just that T should be lowercase, that first T and, and that first.
So it's consistent, yeah.
Uh, and yeah, I, I, I thought that that comma was optional. Again, I throw commas around like they're. It's because they're fun.
I use dots.
I, yeah. My son told me that that's aggressive using eight percent. I, I don't know why. Um, he said, don't do that when you text. It seems impressive. Thoughts? Sorry. Uh, is anything else? Thank you. Sorry. Yes, thank you very much.
It looks.
I, I love, I love these. As you know, every time we put one up, I gush over them. So thank you very much for doing this and appreciate that we get more and more of them. Thanks very much.
Should we um, return next month or, or at the council meeting?
No.
Approved with?
It's, it's approved.
Big approval with this change.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Forward.
Yeah.
That what we're planning to do then.
Where are y'all thinking about locate?
Uh, we haven't met with, uh, that's not a park. It's not a park, so we, so we would have to meet with uh, Daryl and Robbie, I guess, just in front of City House.
Thank you all for your hard work.
Open to suggestions.
Yeah, this is great.
And is this one going to have to be twenty feet up in the air like the other one? Probably still here, right?
Well, the, the pole's tall enough.
Yeah. I mean, it's the new anti-vandalism theory on those, isn't it? That they're up higher.
Yeah, so far, Cochran Mill has not been vandalized and it's.
It could be hard to get up there and do something, yeah.
Hopefully it would be vandalized in front of the police department as well, you know, hopefully.
Hey, Brian, what's the next one you're working on?
Yeah, uh, we are working on McMillan Store right now, which is also known as Scott Hut. Yeah, awesome. So that's very cool. Thanks, guys.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up are the commission members. Um, I had when uh, when we had a, a departure from the Historic Commission, I talked to Lila and Brian and, and the rest of the Historic Commission folks and they, they were of a mind that uh, we needed to put Allison Duncan back on. I talked to Allison. Allison's willing to do that, so that's my, my recommendation there. I mean, she's been on it before. She had stepped off at one point. Uh, that's a really good. The group of, well, the group of people now that all, they'll all get along, so.
Yeah.
Uh, Parks Commission, I'm recommending no changes there. Everybody that is on wants to stay and that's a great group. Um, I asked for input on, and I'm sorry, I don't, I meant to take out. Um I asked for input on, and I'm sorry, I don't, I meant to take out the. Uh ask for input on the additions to the planning commission. We talked about taking it to seven. Uh again, because you know, people drop off and and like right now we're at three, it's it's kind of hard to. Feel like you have the full group. From both Doug and Camille, uh Mitchell Wolf is a a new guy that moved in in District Two. That's got a lot of experience that is relevant to the topic matter. Uh he has spent his career. Basically buying old, beautiful old art deco office buildings that are falling apart and. Uh you know, underoccupied and rehabilitating them and getting them rented and and you know, leaving them beautiful and going on to the next one. Uh and he's retired here and wants to get involved in something and loves our zoning and thinks it's really interesting and and wants to be a part of that. Uh Charles Hayes, we know uh from uh Heatherwood uh has been in here many times talking about the Heatherwood folks. And and what's going on in Heatherwood. And uh has also expressed several times a lot of interest in doing this. And again, we're trying to pick people from different parts of town, different different backgrounds. Will Duncan came from Scott. Uh Will Duncan, obviously Allison Duncan's husband, he is a an engineer. That works for a company that does that kind of civil engineering kind of stuff and and has an interest in the subject matter. Uh John Cresto uh came through Rodney uh was somebody who has been here. Once for his own rezoning and has been very involved since and very interested in the subject, wants to participate that way. All seem like good people. I've talked to all of them. They all are interested in serving and so. Uh you know, kind of moved around the room and and got people's input and here we are. Um anybody have any issue with anybody or?
How soon can we swear them in?
No, that's the point, right? So yeah, we'll get them adopted today. They'll get sworn in the next meeting and they're ready to go. Yep. Yep, um and I think their next meeting is quick, right? Like it's. A week from now, yeah. We love to give the schedules to everybody because like, oh, by the way, first meeting. Uh Mike is gonna, once we go through the process tonight, he's gonna make sure everybody's got the most up to date. Um comp plan and zoning and all of that. And probably uh try to get a meeting set up between now and that first meeting with Doug and Mike, just kind of. Get people up to speed a little bit before they step in. Um you know, it's it's partly learn as you go, it's just the fact of how this stuff works. Uh but again, you guys have been in a lot of meetings, you've seen a lot of things happen, so. Uh it should be, it should be fairly quick progress. And and again, you know, good diverse group of of backgrounds and interest level, but all people that want to be involved and that's the, to me, the. Biggest criteria is people that want to come help us to happen. So any questions there? Okay, and. That's it for the meeting and then we had a couple of other work session items. Uh maybe clean up that, Ruby, I'm soon.
Oh, yeah, I'm Robbie.
Uh just, yeah, who set that up?
Well, it's three of them.
Yeah, right. I can't be all the credit, that's that's all I'm saying.
No, 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 we've been talking about it for a while. And last um meeting, um I mentioned it again, and so then Robbie actually set up the meeting with GFI. There, Robbie and myself, we was on the meeting and we came up with a date. Unfortunately, won't be here for that anyway, but yeah, so Robert, you can explain.
Yeah, it's on uh June twenty-second. Uh I'll be driving back from Texas that day, so I won't be here either, but I hope everybody else uh can bring their trash. We have a flyer. I'm gonna put it on the website. It's been in my weekend review, but we do have a flyer out.
On the table.
It's on the table and it talks about the date and the time that we're doing it and people have been asking, hey, what can we bring? What can we bring? That flyer tells you what you can't bring.
Right.
So that's all you need to know. Here's what you can't bring. Everything else is on the table and and GFL, they are. Uh it it's a great, they're a great company. They came out here, they met with us, they say, look, we're gonna be out here with you, we're gonna be helping you, we're gonna be monitoring it. You might want to have somebody here from the police department or at least somebody that knows city addresses, so. That way, when someone shows up and say, I live at one, two, three RICO Road, okay, you're in the city, but someone says, yeah, I live um over here off. Of of Cedar Grove Road or something, Fairburn Address could be in the city, could be in City South Fulton. Um this is for the city of Chattahoochee Hills. Only residents only, free of charge.
And this is the way that the other cities do it too, which is why, you know, where everybody's been used to going in City South Fulton, we can't go anymore, so. It's great that you guys set this up.
Yeah, so it's gonna be on Saturday up until up to noon. I think it's nine to noon or seven to noon. I have to look at the flyer, I can't remember.
It I think at nine.
Nine to noon.
I'll double check it. Uh also, and if you volunteer, they're gonna have some food, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Seven, seven to seven to noon because they they like to get it early. It's summer, it's hot, they understand that, but they're here. Here's the flyer right here, so.
That's seven, it's broke.
Seven AM and yeah, they're gonna, they bring stuff, they bring food out and stuff for the volunteers like like Ruby was saying and it's a, it's a. Quite of an event. I hate I'm I'm gonna miss it, but I'm gonna, I gotta drive twelve hours instead.
If if y'all, if y'all would go ahead and start telling people where it's gonna be and how we're gonna do it, it's gonna be in front of City Hall. With a backback loader and some roll-offs. You're gonna come in this side, the normal end. People are gonna be there to unload you. Uh we're gonna have an excavator there for larger things that can mash down into their es. The into the roll-off and you're gonna exit there. So just pass that on when people ask where, when and how, that's it.
So Robbie, could you send us a JPEG of that thing so that we can put it on all the Facebook pages?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, that'd be great because you know, you can't bring tires, batteries, Marshall trash, chemicals. No drugs, no paint. No dead bodies.
About tires.
Those are, ah, that's first on list, no tires.
Any other fun anybody wants to have with that one? Moving on section, all right. Uh next up. Sorry. Next up is a ongoing conversation we've been having about uh about uh. What happens when? So the reality is for a large zoning project, especially one that has a DRI attached to it. We get notified of the project and then it has to go up to DCA for DRI stuff and. We get feedback on that and it may require changes to the plan that they had originally had. It's it's a process. It could take months, months and months. And then sometimes too, council has suggestions or requirements for the developer and they have to change the plans to accommodate that kind of thing. And Scott had brought up uh in a recent meeting. You know, the fact is that sometimes when these things sit on the agenda for a while and get deferred, it's like people forget that they're there. And then if we just all of a sudden vote on it the next week, then people will be surprised, which doesn't seem right either to me. So we were talking about how to how to mitigate that. I've got a question for the city attorney on this as to whether we can just make it a practice or whether we need to. Put it in organs, right? But what I'm thinking is on any project that's been on the table for six months or more, if it comes to a vote. We have to do it two reading, right? So that again, people know this one's actually coming up for vote now. We're planning on voting on it. In in July, so we'll have another meeting in June to talk about it. Because again, if the plan is changed enough. You know, people want to see the new plan, have comments on it or whatever, just want to build that into the process. Now, I'm I'm happy just making that our process, but again, does it need to be in code change that, you know? And and that's just my suggestion, right, that 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 you do this thing. Because we know that sometimes this process is dragged on.
Sure, certainly, I think as a process, it's a good idea. We'd have to research to see if there's a code requirement.
Okay. Because I know that there are DCA requirements going around all of that stuff and I don't want to get a follow those. And then just, what do you guys think? You know, as a concept, again, the the idea of letting people know for sure that this thing's coming up for vote and got time to comment a couple of times. Just makes sense.
Well, I think, yeah, I think in general, we want to keep the public as informed as possible. I think also the I the the question here, which.
Nobody can hear.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay. How about now?
That's better.
Okay, I'm sorry. That's usually I just put it down in my voice. Um and you know, it's important to keep the um the the public aware and it's but also. Important to clarify our process, our z- our zoning, if you look at the code, you know, we so. I'm struggling to even turn up the dates, but zoning uh uh approve this in November? Was it or December? So for months of six, so if we're talking about the. The Merrill project specifically, which is what raises this whole.
Right, right.
Then we've got this, you know, serial deferrals, but the code uh section three nine B, I you can run to that. One to four. Uh council's supposed to act at the next meeting after the zoning board votes. And the and section four says council may defer, quote, for the purpose of holding another public hearing at the planning commission. And um and says public notice requirements uh in sections three, seven shall be followed. And so since we're, since we're addressing, you know, TSW is is working on changes. And since this is a good test case for our process, I think making sure that our process keeps the public fully informed throughout. And that we and and also, and you know, I think we can step back and and ask. Some larger questions and maybe they go to TSW to help us think through about uh. About. Well, and I mean, in the in this case, we have uh with the with the Merrill project. And a seemingly endless back and forth negotiation that that at some point. It would seem to me, since we're, since what we're gonna get is a substantial revision. It seems to me that this would be a great point, a great time to, and I don't, again, I don't know what the mechanism would be legally, that would be your your call. But um you know, at no point where they asked by Mike, for example, to say, you you're not ready, withdraw and resubmit when you're ready. So, but you know, I don't know how that goes, but it seems to me that that. At the very least, this whole project needs to go back through. We have a new zoning board about to be seated. It should go back to them and through the process again. And and I guess we we have the legal. Matter of ma- making sure that we're, you know, we're not sending them for another.
That's.
DRI, so but the but in terms of our process with our zoning, as important as we hold it. Putting them back through the zoning process seems at a minimum. What needs to go on because they're gonna submit apparently substantial revisions to the one. Piece of it that we even really know anything about, which is phase one. And and I don't, I think. I think that part two maybe speaks to maybe. Again, through TSW and given what our attorneys dictate us uh. Putting a putting a mechanism in place that uh. How to say this, a a mechanism in place that that lets us say. When a thing is ready, uh uh so that we're not going through endless iterations. I don't, I don't think it's.
Well, I think.
It it isn't just this way.
No, I get it.
It's that it's become this way and and we went through this with the movie studio. And I I would hate for us to end up in another such thing. And so and so that on the legal side, maybe uh setting ourselves up to. Address these things in phases, you know, show me you can develop section one since we've given us that. And I and I and you know, different projects are gonna have different exigencies.
Right.
So and I I can't forecast what that would be, but it but TSW presumably knows, the attorneys know. How we can demand phased approvals.
I think I think we also need to just consider, right, we've only got the opportunity for about three or. Three or four things of this scale because of the the lot size is required, right?
And.
And these huge projects are gonna take time. This particular one got dragged out because there was a change in council, right, and council bought on the process. That's why we kind of went back to the drawing board on this one. I'll say this, to your point about them dragging on forever. You know, they've gotten this council's input, they're responding to this council's input, we're gonna call the question. Right? I mean, we're not gonna let that drag on forever. Either you're responsive to the things that the council's asked for. And it's an acceptable plan that you guys can build in or not. Uh we're not gonna continue going. We're waiting for them to respond, sure enough. And and again, the idea that we're gonna have public notice and have the public aware so that they can have comment and all of that, absolutely agree. And and we just need to check and and you and I can confirm, I guess, if if we do need to do something that is. An actual code change, we bring that in, but I think we can, I think we can just do it as an internal policy. But again, you please confirm that for us, right?
We'll take a look at it, possibly with the notice provision, since the notice provisions for a seat uh floor and not a ceiling. You can give all the notice you want, if you want to exceed the notice requirement.
That's what I think, yeah.
The substantive changes or phased approval might be different, so.
Well, can I can I add this? Um you know, the the thing that bothered me about the whole thing, I have talked to some of the council members. You know, when you submitted uh proposed, whatever that is, um regardless of who it is. Now, if you're needing thirty, thirty-five variances upfront and discussion on this and that, what you've done is you brought me a project on my table. You're asking me to help you. It's not my job. Your job is to read our zone, put something together and say you need two or three variances. You're meeting ninety-five percent of the criteria. Now you've got my attention. That's what we're put in the office for. Our job is not to make the bend over Bible, which that is insane. The consultants get paid, what, two grand an hour? Um that's all I'm asking as counselors. Uh you know, and I I thought we were pretty clear in the um spring plane. I think there's some things that we need to discuss before we even think about another project. This may be too. Uh one of the one of the um items we talked about was preservation, real preservation, preserving lined up front. I want to see that in your drawing. Or I don't even want to look at your drawing. Um so um that's that's where I'm at. The whoever brings a project forward, their their job is not to put us to work. Their job is to fit what we've come up with. They've got some questions. Mike can handle questions. Mike Mike's job is not to be bogged down. Especially with these people who ain't got no money. You know, if anything, we need to um. You know, look at who we're dealing with and uh we need to look at what some other cities do to protect themselves. They do require of. Some form of financial um records there to make sure. You want to put a hundred million dollars on the ground, you need to have fifty million to start. Before you start moving dirt around like that. And the phase thing, I don't think that takes a lot of you. I think that takes counsel. You proved us, you can do phase one correctly, you can preserve that piece of land, guess what, and you're done, we'll do phase two. Because having land preserved in the rear ain't happening. I've been up here fifteen years. I've seen a hundred acres in fifteen years. That's a factual number. That's the math for you. So if you want to preserve, let's let's back up a little bit and let's let's remind ourselves, we run this city, these developers don't run ours. We got our zone in here for a reason, and it ain't to explain it to people. We put it in English. We put in that, we spent eighty thousand dollars so people could comprehend it, remember that? That's all I got.
I I I do think putting some uh thresholds in place to empower. Mike, I mean, the 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 structure of the city is that uh Mike's office staff. Does that work, interacts, makes recommendations, council weighs in here and there, but fundamentally, staff brings it to council, council votes. And then but. The city needs thresholds in place to empower Mike to say, no, this isn't ready, come back when you're ready. Instead of the instead, as Richie points out, Councilor Chinette points out, uh extensive. Involvement over and over again by council. When all most of this should be, should have been handled, most of it can, I think, be handled. By staff before it comes to council, which is what our city, that's how our code is structured. So it's just worth remembering that, thinking about what kind of thresholds could be put in place to empower Mike to. Throttle the level of input. I mean, you say, I mean, to the to the point of the the changing council dragging. On some level, you kind of like it to work without council personalities interfering with something like this. I don't think, and you know, and we're a strong council, we've mayor set up. I think mayor and council should be doing our job. And that that doesn't need that. There should be a setup to in to keep our zoning in effect without. The interference of a bunch of personalities.
You're here. You're here. Uh we'll come back with your recommendation if there's a legal thing that we need to do to make that happen, but we did, I think we're all in agreement on kind of. The 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 goal of making sure that the information is out there so that people are aware of what we're doing. And the other thing too is there will be some recommendations coming back out of our spring workshops that that help. To with requirements for community applications, all that. Any other thoughts, comments?
No, I I just want to say, I mean, it doesn't matter who the developer is. I just think they need to bring a package good enough for to constitute your time. Okay, that that's that's our job. We gotta remember what our jobs are, these people's job, and put us to work. You know, they're having trouble understanding that zone and that'll, good luck to them. Yeah, we got a lot going on. That's all.
No, I I hear that, I I also think too, when we're trying to. Uh we're thinking about this, the way sometimes it's happened with me, since we're representing, what, six hundred people each? We could get feedback from our community during the process and it's a nice opportunity that we have to be able to come back and make suggestions and changes. I don't think of it's coming from me necessarily, right, and when people sort of get a chance to look at it and get involved.
Yes.
That does give us an opportunity, that I think we need to maintain a little bit of that. That uh of control, but not just to leave it to the, otherwise, we just have a planning commission and be done with it.
We want to be responsive.
Right, that's why we're here.
What the community.
Yeah.
In a way, and so, I don't know, I just think that's a fine balance to keep.
And and that's also a reminder that. That what we're concerned with is the people of Chattahoochee Hills, not hypothetical future people. Necessarily, and so that goes to privileging our people and what they will.
I think, yeah, I mean, I think our responsibility there is both and, it's to the people of Chattahoochee Hills and their children and grandchildren. Reality is the decisions that we're making, a lot of them. You know, you look at developments and development schedules and all of that, things that take forty or fifty years to build out. Lot of that stuff happens after everybody here is dead.
Right.
And so our responsibility is to make sure that that's all correct as well, and then, you know. It's just a fact, it's just a fact, I mean, people react sometimes to things, you know, because this is the overall scale, scale of the thing to build out. Not recognizing that it's five years before the first piece of it actually hits the ground. And then forty or fifty or sixty years before the last piece of it's done. And you know, our responsibilities are responsive to the people now, for sure, but also absolutely. Be mindful of and take care of their children and their grandchildren and what their lives are gonna be like because of the impacts of the things. And preserving seventy percent of all these farms and all of that is something that the Eagles have done. And in, I personally don't mind having some active intervention to make it better.
My dad has reminded me many times, my dad's reminded me many times. Been involved with the city. He's like, Rodney, it's not about you. It's not even about your kids, it's about the future generation, when you make decisions. You need to look long, there's too many short term decisions that get made, and all we gotta do is look at our. Sister cities around us, the short. We've got long term visions, what makes a difference. That's what's going to make us special in the future.
So let's be in no hurry.
Yeah, right, but that, no hurry, but keep everybody informed, keep working till we get them right.
Yeah, I don't know how we got talking about long term vision, all I'm talking about is whatever developer it is. Make make sure they they, yeah, we're gonna have interaction, we know that. Don't bring me thirty-five variances, it's like having a deck of a hundred sheets of paper and eight weeks later, we've replaced seventy percent of them. That means you wasn't even ready to walk in that office, that's all I'm saying.
Right.
Let's let's guard our shelf for that, because I know Mike and and everybody else doesn't need to waste our tax dollars on that, you're unprepared, you're unprepared. You know, that's all I'm saying, yeah, we need development, we're just over for our last five, some are broke, some only got it together, I don't know. That's just where we're at, and and what it's done, it's wasted a lot of people's time. And I think because of those actions by the developers, whoever they are, it's given us the the reason to put some parameters in place. Before we get two years down the road and say, well, we learned something, no, we didn't, learning was broken, wasted our time, we had something positive to do. And I'm sure it wasn't dealing with that, that's that's my point, not about our future vision, you know, I headed that way. We just need to do what people didn't do what they said.
And recognize the context within which we're working. Alright, so. Anymore about that, because we're gonna get some feedback from the city attorney, we'll talk about specifics uh next time with that in mind. We can do about something or whether we're okay just deciding what we decided. Next up was a conversation that we'd had about zoning application and special events fees. Uh special events fees is gonna come back up next time, that's actually staff has been working on that. The particular thing there was as we were talking about the zoning application fees and everything. The uh Tomorrow World came up. And the idea that, you know, there are some things that happen here too that have such impact, they should definitely cost more to do than they do. And so they're still looking at that, because there's a legal requirement regarding how much you can charge for things and.
Right.
We're trying to make sure that whatever we do stays inside of that, you want to talk about that something?
I will, um just very briefly say um. The permit fees and those sort of things are, the intent is to cover the cost, um so. We're just looking at it, I think we may actually be in line, but if we can increase some of those uh fees. That have an impact on the community and still be in line with that, um we'll do what we can.
And the mayor is pushing hard to. Internalize external impacts, right, so that we can increase those prices, because we know that they have impacts outside that are not picked up in our current pricing.
And the fees are adopted with the budget, so if between now and a special called meeting. Um you'll see those changes in the fee schedule and we'll make sure they're highlighted, so.
But there is some stuff in here already, uh if you look at the, if you've had time to get into it um on the. The item number, what's the budget item actually, if you go behind the folded pages. Um. About the third page in behind that is the development fee schedule and it's got some highlighted stuff on it. And you see there um. Some very significant increases in the larger property ones, right, again, reflective of the fact that, for example, the movie studio. You know, that took a lot of time, did a lot of staff time, and our our fees that we have in place certainly didn't cover the cost of that staff time, right? And so we're doing something here that that makes it more in line, but we feel like the actual staff time that was involved in that is, again, you know, keep it in mind. It's a legal requirement from DCA.
I'm sorry, um I I was gonna say, on on some of these. May- maybe we think about charging by the hour until we see what type of time we have in it. I mean, because some of these can go on forever, you know, five hundred bucks don't don't hit you for, you know, one hundred and fifty hours.
It wa- was five hundred, what we're doing now is doing something that by acre goes up to a maximum of a hundred and fifty thousand. Right? So it's a significant change. And again, if you're coming in to do ten thousand acres or something, you can, you can, you can't swing that, you probably can't, right?
Got our attention, we'll talk to you then, we reciprocate.
Uh same thing for, you know, variances and all of that, just increasing the. The level to which, if you want more of something and you're using larger scale of something, you're paying more for, it just makes sense, right? That somebody that's coming in to do two hundred acre project should not be paying the same amount as somebody that's coming in to do two thousand acre project. Or a five thousand acre project, whatever. And so this is, this is a suggestion on that. And then also uh things like, you know, minor subdivisions, somebody's coming in to do a format subdivision, it's one thing, and somebody's coming in to divide one lot into. Totally different thing, if somebody's taking four hundred acres and buying into the twenty, right? And so just the changes are are reflective of things that, you know, talking to Mike actually take up time. That we weren't getting compensated for. And this is already in the budget package, because we've already done this work, so again, Dana's still working on the special event fees one, but these are, these are in here. Maybe has any questions about that, but that that was, again, because the the requirement is, it's reflective of the time spent, the money spent. On some level and and you know, wet finger to the wind about what the stuff costs, so. Um taking into account that a big project has multiple iterations, it's gonna take a while, right, the DRI process alone takes four or five months, so. Okay? Any other questions about that? If not, I believe that is it for our work session, mayor and council, anybody else have anything else they want to bring up? Otherwise, we will see you back at six for the meeting, uh I know that we've got several of our. New planning commission people here, uh I think you're all here, actually, we'll see, yeah, I see, so if anybody wants to talk to somebody and. Get to know them or whatever, now's the time, and uh. Thank you all for being here. Don't know what you signed up for, uh yes, we're, thank you.